All right, I'm gonna, we're gonna call this December 12th Business Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley. Matt, Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Coller.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Please join me for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, it is. Just having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, I'm having issues too. For some reason, I think the wireless is struggling. Is that what it is? Um. Let me just put a real, like, be like that sign and then. Okay.
And it just crashed. Yeah, it just crashed. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, looking for a motion for the approval of the minutes as presented. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have multiple seconds, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We have a special recognition today, Mrs. Mares. Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. This evening, we wanted to showcase some of the sounds of the season and some of the talents of our students. We had a quintet of high school orchestra students playing a little bit before the board meeting. We now have students from Middle School West who are performing now. If it would be okay with the board, I'd ask that you come out into the lobby for just a few minutes to hear them, they really are wonderful, they had a concert last week and it sounded terrific. So if it's not too much trouble, it would be great to recognize.
Okay, thank you guys very much, that was a very nice presentation. We'll move on to comments from any topic, does anyone from the audience like to speak?
This is Jared Gale, Lower Frederick.
Hold on one second, please, sorry about that.
I'm here again because there's at least one board member who refuses to even look at the flag when it's being pledged, at least one turn around this time. That member is Sarah Evans-Brockett. I encourage everybody to participate in the protest we have scheduled, it was going to be this Sunday, however, it will be next Sunday. Not this one, coming up the week after that. Sunday morning, 7:00 AM, detail PM before the address I will be more than happy to provide. I also encourage everybody to send bars of Ivory soap to her house. When you live in an ivory tower, you should have plenty of soap for it. If you're unwilling to even be respectful enough, you have a sticker on your laptop that says, "Be Kind", yet you don't even turn to the flag and you won't even look at me right now. Says a lot about your character, to be honest with you. It's kinda sad that you're elected to this position and I hope that every member of this community comes in order to show their lack of support against Mrs. Brockett. What I want to read to you here is something special. Some writers have confounded society with government as to leave little or no distinction between them, whereas are not only different but have different origins. Society is produced by our wants, government is produced by our wickedness. The former produces happiness and positivity by uniting our affections, the latter negatively by restraining our vices. The one encourages social intercourse, the other creates distinctions. The first is the patron, the last is a punisher. Society in every state is a blessing, but government, even in its best state, is but a necessary evil, in its worst state, an intolerable one. For when we suffer, we are exposed to the same miseries by a government which might be a country without a government. Our calamity is heightened by reflecting that we furnish the means by which we suffer. Now, it's a small quote. My guess is that very few actually know what this is. And as leaders of our community, members of the board, each one of you should be able to tell exactly what that is right off the top of your head. That is a quote from Thomas Paine's Common Sense. Now, I probably have to describe that and what that means to a few members here that don't really seem to appreciate this country or what it stands for, the flag or anything like that. So be more than happy to. But again, I encourage everybody to start Brockett's at her house in front of our, in front of her house in 7:00 AM, not this Sunday, but next Sunday, and we'll start every Sunday therein from thereon. Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on to public comments now, anyone offer a public comment? Mr. Cybil, then Ms. Sadler.
Hi, I'm Christian Cybil from Collegeville. I'm a student at the high school. My speech is not gonna be so exciting, I'm not gonna take off any layers of clothes. But I just wanted to speak on the academic and college prep classes being consolidated in the social studies and English classes. Honestly, this isn't gonna be the most amazing speech because I didn't really know about it until this week when I was talking with a couple teachers and they were talking to me about what impacts it would have on the school. I just wanna make sure that every decision on the board is being made thoughtfully and with the understanding that everything's gotta be working efficiently for the teachers, students, and everybody involved. I was talking to a couple teachers and I took a couple notes on how they felt about it. So primarily, the issue with this consolidation is that it reflects equality, but it doesn't affect equity in that a lot of the academic classes that are gonna be merged with the college prep classes are gonna lose support that are often given to those classes. And there are some teachers who are concerned that this support isn't gonna be replaced in other areas once this change is made. It seems like for them, or at least for a couple of teachers who I spoke with, the rug's kinda being pulled out from under them without a lot of support seeming to be provided or discussed with them. Furthermore, the college prep students are often gonna face a disadvantage when they're being mixed with students from the academic classes that may not function as well in a college prep classroom. If you have a disruptive student who every day is gonna cause an issue just because they're that type of student, it's gonna hinder the learning of the college prep students and the learning of the academic student because they're not gonna have the support that they would've had in an academic class. So, yeah, so when I was talking to teachers, it really just seemed like the academic kids were gonna get the short end of the stick for lack of support and the college prep kids were gonna lose class time in that the teachers would have to be handling academic issues with college prep students in the class. So it just seemed like both sides were kinda not getting equitable treatment. It's that idea that if you've got a fence and you've got 10 people at varying heights, you're not gonna give everybody the same height stepstool, you're gonna give them different height stepstools because different people need different things. So I understand that the district is working towards this equity and equality. I just think you guys need to rework the plan or make sure that there's gonna be support systems in place to support these classes that are gonna be merged with this new action. Thank you.
Trina Sadler, Skibek, Pennsylvania. I'm just a little baffled that when I come to the school board meetings, there's always some talk about the Pledge of Allegiance. I want school board members, I don't care if you stand for the pledge or not, I want school board members who are focused on the needs of our students in this community, our staff. The Pledge of Allegiance is such a focus and I don't understand why. We should be making sure that our school board members are doing what is in the best interest of our students and our community, not this focus on whether people stand or not stand. I want people on the school board who are going to do what is best for every single student in this community and that's it. So I would really like for the focus to stop being on who's standing and not standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are you making decisions that are impacting our students and our community in a positive, equitable way? So I hope that our school board president will kinda stop the constant berating of school board members with this standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I find it very bizarre that that's the focus. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none. Reports, presentations were given last week. Student liaison report, president report, superintendent's report, and solicitor's report. Anyone want to give an update? No? Any discussions on district and committee reports? Seeing none. Looking for approval for the consent agenda as presented? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the ayes have it. Sarah, do you need a hard copy? Because it just. Okay. Education.
Thank you. Item 4.01 was covered last week. 4.02 is the approval of the High School Program Planning Guide changes. Are you able to pull that up, Dr. Russell? The motion is to approve the High School Program Planning Guide changes, an iso-move.
Any discussion?
I would request that we, if it's okay if we hold off a month on this. I think there were a lot of questions last week that weren't answered. I know that this was the topic of discussion at the SAFE meeting on Friday, and I think a lot of students and teachers have concerns about this. So I know I'd appreciate more information before we make this change.
Well...
If I may, it would be really helpful if you could be specific about the questions that you felt were not answered or that we still have. That would help Mrs. Smith and I to be very targeted in this week's memo.
So, the questions that I raised last week were around a tangible presentation, a tangible plan of what compensations were going to be made in the merging. I know that we are down-staffed with paraprofessionals, and I just feel as though if we are not prepared to supplement integration for these classes, then the delivery of the curriculum, to Mr. Seibel's point, won't be... It won't be done in really... In the best interest of all students. I think truly that the concept around eliminating the academic class, I'm not against that portion. I'm concerned about the compensation for services to our classroom teachers, honestly. And I just, I didn't see anything in the presentation last week that described what supports would be put in place other than "supports," the word "supports." So we can't put supports in place that we don't have.
And I think to piggyback on that, it didn't sound like there was a lot of conversation with teachers, and it feels like teachers are feeling unsupported in this. So prior to voting on it, I would like teachers to have some feedback and some understanding of how they will be supported. I think there are so many of our students who have IEPs or 504s at this point, and if we're going to now be combining all of them into one class, I think you have teachers that are worried that they're going to be sued all the time for not meeting those needs. So how are we going to support our teachers so that they're not, that they feel supported?
And to that point, I mean, and Dr. Koller had mentioned this at the tail end of my comments last week, that this is really not an impact to the honors or the AP sections. And so what the group that's really being impacted are the, I don't want to say the word, I don't want to use the word "regular," but the ones that aren't on a spectrum of needing enrichment or remediation. And I think that that's the group that the teachers are rightly the most worried about, especially when as a district and as a board, we are continuing to hound, you know, all of our faculty for improvement of test scores. So I did appreciate Dr. Moss's point about the results of the improvement of test scores with the integration of the academic kids into the mainstream classrooms. But again, without the proper supports in place, I see it being more of a detriment than a success.
Were teachers consulted?
Yes, according to my conversations with Dr. Moss, there have been conversations with teachers, and in particular, department chairs, who are then requested to turn key information and have further conversations. But yes, that is my understanding.
Do the department chairs approve of, just out of curiosity, do the department chairs approve of the presented planning guide changes?
I think there are department chairs who have questions.
Have their questions been answered?
I would ask Dr. Moss that question.
And then, didn't we do this in, Dr. Moss, we did this in science and math, is that correct? So we have a history, and you're, I assume, feeling comfortable with making this shift, looking at how we've implemented it a couple of years prior, would be my summation? Okay, thank you.
I mean, all that I would add is, I think, you know, Dr. Moss stated that teachers, clearly, we were transparent with that. There is some apprehension among our teaching staff, and we are working with them. In fact, today, we had a conversation about what those supports could exactly look like, what professional development could that look like, how might we be able to, you know, seek other supports to have in our classrooms or fill some of our positions. So I think we are certainly working on that. I think there are some teachers who, maybe their philosophy is not in alignment. I personally believe this is a step in the right direction. It is ratcheting up the rigor for our students, and with our students that have some additional needs, currently, right now, in that situation, they are in a class together, which is a lot of needs in one class. This will actually allow us to spread them apart. And there is research, I know that Dr. Russell shared some of that with the board, that talks about how inclusionary efforts really do benefit all of the students in the classroom and raises the level of curriculum. This is about accessing the core curriculum for all of our students. So I agree with Dr. Moss and believe this is a move in the right direction.
Okay, so we have, we had a motion and a second, so we're in discussion. Sarah, it sounded, excuse me, I apologize, Ms. Evans-Brockett, it sounds like you might want to make a motion to table?
I would ask, how much does that interfere with the program planning process if we were to wait a month and have more discussions?
Just know, we only have one meeting in January, not two. Correct. We just have a business meeting.
Could we approve the program planning guide changes minus the academic and prep changes? Would that be helpful at all, or that you'd need the entire thing to make any difference?
So, just to kind of clarify how my brain's thinking on this, because we have students that are concerned, teachers that are concerned, and administration, or department chairs that are also concerned. But you're working through that process to try to just get everyone on the same page. And we've done this before when we did, what was it, science and what, Ms. Mears? Science and math. Were the same apprehensions around when this happened with science and math? And did any of the validity of the apprehensions come true?
You know, I can speak firsthand, and Dr. Moss and I were reviewing this. When it was first introduced to biology, teachers were really struggling. It's counterintuitive to do this, and yet the research is extremely supportive of such a step. And I'll share more of that with the board this week. And we will talk about some of the supports that we actually articulated today in some conversations. There was serious apprehension. However, over time, as things moved forward, that subsided, and it actually went away. And students did better.
Can I just ask one question about the supports that are in place? I know that the supports at that point in time, with math and science, there was more available supports to be able to put in. Are the supports that we need for this now to take place, are those supports available to us at this point? I mean, do we have the staffing and the supports necessary in order for us to comfortably move in that direction?
So I would add, and I'm going to let Dr. Moss speak as well, I believe we have more supports in the form of co-teachers today than we did when we took the step in biology and Algebra I. We are struggling to fill some power positions at the high school. However, we have more co-teaching pairs than we did in years past, which is a big help.
And I would agree with that. When we actually made the change in biology, we only actually added or had two sections of co-taught biology. And that's all we have in biology still, is two sections of co-taught. So the rest of the other students are in courses that are actually are not co-taught, and they're succeeding, which is really nice. We do have a couple, we do have, I believe, four sections or five sections in Earth Systems that are co-taught currently. But still, biology, we only have two sections. And it's not that the students wouldn't have been in academics, they would have been. But they're thriving in that situation where they're placed with their other peers.
Can... So this has been a discussion with the teachers. You said since last year, this isn't just, wasn't just thrown on them. Like, they didn't just hear the board meeting last week, and all of a sudden, we're like, oh my goodness, they're doing this.
We've been talking to teachers since last year. Over the summer, the English Department, they've been working on curriculum. They were aware of that, and we had the discussions. We've, as I said, we've gone to various department meetings, the English Department, discussed it in department chair meetings, but we've been discussing it since, I was going to say, maybe last February or March.
That does help me feel more comfortable about it. I think the impression was that this was thrown on teachers. So I don't need to change my motion.
Any other discussions? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it.
All of the rest of items under education were on consent.
Business, Mr. Dorr?
Thank you. 5.01 was done last week. 5.02, 3, and 4 are on consent. 5.05 is the grants and donations, if you want to put it up. There was one additional grant that came in between last week and this week.
Thank you very much.
And that's my section.
Payment of bills. I make a motion to move for the ratification of bills and payments in 6.01, and the approval of the Treasury and Financial Report in 6.02. There's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Keenan, professional personnel? Do we have a second? There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That ends your section. Governance, Mrs. Mears? Sorry, I apologize, Dr. Koller.
That's okay. All items are under consent.
Governance, Mrs. Mears?
Thank you. 9.01 is first reading on policies. I don't know if there are any questions. 9.02 is on consent, and 9.03 through 9.0...
We do need a motion for...
Yep, I'm going, sorry. Hold on.
Motion to approve the appointments to...
Thank you.
North Monco Technical School, JOC, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it.
9.04 is a motion to approve, you know, my computer is so far behind.
That's fine. Nine, oh, you got it up there?
The motion to commit to the principles of governance, policy 011. Iso-move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. We will have a document to be presented before everyone leaves, just to sign, to give back. And then we'll get Dr. Campley, we'll get her to sign it in January.
We, 9.05, we held a discussion, and 9.06 is the motion to approve the board goals, an iso-move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none.
Oh, Mr. Sadler.
Yeah?
Isn't this something I think we should table until January to be able to have a discussion more about?
We can if you want. It was, we talked about this last week, would be the same goals that we did for 2022. There's a motion to table. Is there a second? There's a second. Discussions on the table moment? Call question on table. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Ayes have it. So ends your section. Comments from the audience?
Jared Gale, Lower Frederick. Firstly, I would like to address the issue of the pledge. Anyone has the right to not show the respect for the flag, which unites all of us. You also have the right to be a person with a big A on your chest. The person who feels we should not move on from the pledge issue, A, I agree with you, but for very different reasons, and B, I dare you to say that to the family of any one of the 23 men who died in my unit. If you're asking to represent the public, to be an elected official of our republic, you have a duty to show respect to the pledge and the flag. We will not stop, and we will be here every meeting, and every Sunday, we will be showing up to protest those who cannot show a little bit of dignity. It's amazing how somebody can put out stickers saying "To Be Kind," yet everyone can see the seething hatred spewing from every orifice, eyes fixated straight forward. It's okay, like my shirt says, I'm enjoying the free rant in your head. I've not seen, I've not been a heckler yet, but two Sundays from now, we sure will be, all of us will. And I'm willing to place a bet that there's yard signs, virtue signaling to a level that would make your patron saint, Dr. Fauci blush. As to the person who has an issue from the pledge, I'm going to turn the topic, but to this one instead. The egregious harm that has been directly inflicted upon our students at the direction of specific individuals, chief among them, Ms. Brockett. What you did to our kids, hell-bent, with full-blown TDS driving at the wheel of the bus on the way to the church of the great patron saint, Dr. Fauci. If you don't have one of his bobbleheads already, I'll buy you one. Nah, I'm going to bet you already probably have a couple of his candles already lit in his honor. That was direct abuse to our children. To force them to stick behind screens, all at the to appease the union you bow to and let control you, was direct abuse of our children. Direct abuse. Other schools in the area is back full-time, yet people like Ms. Brockett specifically was staunchly behind allowing this. She then forced our kids, who now some have speech development and other problems, to wear masks 24/7 all the time, making a rule to exempt the board from the masks. They don't have to wear them, but the children do. I am curious, when these hecklers show up on your lawn, will we see just how big your ivory tower really is? Resign in shame now. You are a terrible human being.
Any other comments? Mr. Seibel?
How is that allowed? I just, it seems that the way he's going about getting his message across is vaguely threatening and aggressive. I can still hear him talking.
Hold on, Christian, please. Mr. Gale, you were given your three-plus minutes. Do not talk to the student that is in front of you at all.
Every meeting, the same individual seems to pose an issue. He's disruptive, disrespectful, and frankly, he represents the worst of our community. I don't understand how he keeps being allowed to come in here and do the same thing every time, do the same grandstanding, the same actions that are not expressing freedom of speech, but just expressing, like, hatred. I don't, I genuinely don't understand it. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I would just like to state that unfortunately, under the First, under the First Amendment, offensive and difficult persons are allowed to speak so long as it's not obscene, threatening, or if they're disorderly in their presentation. Mr. Gale, please don't address members of the public.
The public will come to order, please.
The public will come to order, please. Don't talk to the students. I don't care what they say to you, do not talk to the students.
You're going to talk to me, I can talk to you. I can talk back to anybody who's going to talk to me.
Mr. Gell, you've been given your opportunity to make...
We're moving on. Any other comments from the audience? Anybody? No? Okay. Comments from board members? We started there. Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Sarah, do you want to...
No, let her go first. Go ahead.
So we had a very nice week, this week, last week, between this last meeting and this meeting, with some concerts and some different events that the community was able to take part of. One of those was the Holiday Shop hosted at Evergreen and organized by Power Packs. I don't want to take too much time, but I do want to acknowledge that there were families that would be without Christmas gifts for their children if it had not been the organization, collection, and then ultimately, the distribution of these gifts to our community. It was a direct result of the best in our community, the contributions of our community, and all those that volunteered their time and efforts in the community were absolutely remarkable. In addition to that, additional families were able to learn about resources that we provide as part of the Power Packs program for food insecure families throughout the weekend. And additional children were provided an opportunity to get winter coats through the organization, the collection, and the efforts of those that are in charge of Power Packs. So regardless of the negative, harmful, and divisive rhetoric that is put forth in the community by people that disagree with other people, I just want to point out that the good absolutely outweighs the bad. And there is no prevention of any good efforts on the part of any individual because of the negative energy that is put out in the world by some. I hope everybody has a good holiday season. Hanukkah begins on the 18th and we have two really great weekends full of hopefully family and health and happiness. So good wishes to all of you.
Dr. Koller? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
I'll follow up on Ms. White's comments. I just want to add some numbers to the Power Packs information. 155 children will get at least four gifts to open this holiday season because of the generosity of the PV community. 20 additional children will get coats as a result of PV Power Packs. So again, like Ms. White said, I want to thank the PV community for all of the donations. That means that we had over 600 toys donated and we're talking large Lego items, razors, all kinds of great things. I want to thank Evergreen for hosting us, all of the custodial staff for moving all of our items and, you know, putting in the extra hours, and all of the volunteers. It was a very heartwarming experience and nice to see the power of community. So thank you and happy holidays to all.
Dr. Russell?
Yes, Ms. White, thank you for your words. I too appreciate them. And Mrs. Evans-Brockett, thank you again for your efforts this year with the Power Packs and all that you served. I just wanted to mention to the board that Mrs. Smith and I will follow up in the memo this week. Even though the program planning guide was approved this evening, it's unsettling that you are aware of others that are also unsettled. So we'll work on that. And as I mentioned, we did talk about very specific supports. We'll lay that out for you. We'll share some research with you and then address any questions that you might have as follow-up, okay? So thank you for the opportunity and happy holidays once again. Wishing everyone peace.
Thank you. Just want to wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. And I'll read the notice of the video, well, I'll note that the 10.03 notice of video disclaimer. And the board held an executive session prior to the work session today for the purpose of negotiations and student discipline...
And personnel.
And personnel. And with that, the 2022 meetings come to a close. I'll see everyone next year.